Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting of Boston Borough Council's Corporate Community Overview and Scrutiny Committee. I'm Paul Gleeson and I'm chairing the committee, and with me is councillor Susan Welby, who's my vice-chair. At this point, I would like to introduce to the committee George Crisp, who is sitting at the end. George is our environmental enforcement officer, but is here tonight as he is part of our future leadership programme, and is really keen to understand the scrutiny process and value scrutiny how it in the council's overall machinery. That kind of thing, I don't know as well. Anyway, when we reach the work programme item this evening, George will take Andy's place and take us through that. Moving on, our housekeeping rules are as follows: restroom facilities are available for ladies on this floor and for the gentlemen halfway down the main stairwell. In the event of a fire alarm, officers will escort everyone to the fire point in the car park. This meeting is being streamed live, and as such, please may ask all persons addressing the committee to do so through their microphones. Please be advised that abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Anyone who is deemed to breach this requirement will be warned and asked to refrain, and if the behaviour persists, they will be asked to leave the meeting. And also remind them, just have their phones off, please. They will now move on to the main part of the agenda, to receive apologies for absence and notice of any substitutions.
Thank you, chairman. We have apologies from councillors Ariambeth, Mountain and Pierpoint. No substitute members. Thank you.
To receive any declarations of interest in respect of any item on this agenda. Does anybody have any interest in declaring? Councillor Austin. Okay, thank you. I have to declare an interest on the last item on the agenda. I am one of the council's two board members on PSPS. I will therefore have to leave the meeting, and councillor Welbury will take over the chair. Sign the minutes of the previous meeting. Are they agreed? Receive any written questions from members of the public.
No questions, chairman.
Thank you. That concludes the preliminary items. We'll now move on to part two of the agenda, which, as members will have noted, is a busy one this evening. We've got quite a lot on, so let's stay focused if we can. I'll try, but I normally fail, but we'll see what we can do. Our first item of business this evening is a review of the Boston Town Centre strategy, which is on page five of the agenda, and this will be presented by the portfolio holder councillor Del Broughton, supported by the report author, our deputy chief executive for communities, Mr John Deech. Councillor Broughton.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening councillors. This presentation for you tonight is the annual review of the Town Centre strategy, which after going through scrutiny, BTAC and Cabinet and launched in October 2023, we're now coming back to show what progress has been made in the first 12 months. We have 14 slides to show you. The first slide, which is on the screen now, shows what our aim is to make Boston Town Centre a vibrant place and bring increase of footfall and a sense of pride. These two pictures clearly show that throughout the year. The one on the left is obviously the Mayfair, the one on the right is the Christmas event from last year. This is the overview we are presenting tonight to tell you about the activity since adoption of the strategy and anything that scrutiny would like Cabinet to consider going forward. The area in red shows what is covered by the strategy, either side of the River Wiffham. And the purpose of the review is to remind you of the vision for Boston Town Centre and also the objectives, along with your feedback and any recommendations you may wish Cabinet to consider going forward. The vision, obviously, being a Boston Town Centre that brings communities together, a safe place which to enjoy heritage, open spaces and public realm, while supporting a vibrant retail and hospitality experience. As you know, we started off with seven key objectives: clean and tidy, safety for businesses to thrive, residents and visitors to enjoy events, heritage and culture, access and leaving the town centre easily, support and build a cohesive community, and to work with partners and volunteers to achieve this. Our action plan had 73 action points to start, which increased to 74 throughout the year, as it's a working and live document and not something to be left on the shelf, based on four themes, as can be seen here: clean and safe, open for business, culture and heritage and events, and transformation. Out of the 74 action points, you have already completed 24, with 47 on target and only three requiring further work and attention, which I personally feel shows the hard work that has gone into this by our hard working teams this past 12 months. This is the summary of the year in pictures showing our new event. On the top left is the Boston Strongest and Food Festival, followed by the Amazing Christmas Festival, which drew national publicity for all the right reasons, promotion of our five-star businesses, cleaning work done by our hard-working BTAC operatives, many who start work at five o'clock in the morning and are not seen by the residents. This example on the screen, top right, being still lain before, during and after. Community work, obviously, with the beach in Central Park and promotional work in the town centre. New car parking meters accepting card payments for the first time. Deep cleaning of the town with a local firm doing the work, which we try our hardest to achieve all the time, and the new floral displays in partnership with North Sea Camp. The next four slides looks a bit closer at the four thematic areas, the first one being clean and safe. This includes the introduction of community rangers, the new changing places toilets, volunteer CCTV spotters, also a deep clean throughout areas of the town, as well as PSPOs on dog control and wild bird feeding. The open for business, obviously, we have achieved advice from our growth team, giving advice and guidance to businesses throughout the town. Town centre promotional material, as well as attending trade stands at the Lincolnshire and Hecington Shows, which proved very worthwhile. A market development plan, which has been agreed by Cabinet to continue to improve our longstanding market, which is still one of the biggest in the county. Too far. Culture, heritage and events. We promised in our manifesto before being elected we would return Christmas, and we did that with national publicity, again, for the right reasons, and I can assure you this year promises to be even better. We delivered other events during the year, including new events like the Food Festival and Boston Strongest, as well as usual, like the beach event and the summer programme in Central Park for all the communities to enjoy of all ages. Also, a development plan for the Guildhall, which will return to scrutiny to see the work progressing, and today I've been told by councillor Sarah Sharp, who is very passionate about the Guildhall and town like myself, that from August to October, visitors' numbers to the Guildhall is up 24%, which is absolutely brilliant and shows what a great job Sarah Sharp is doing. Finally, the transformation. We've developed a new business forum, which month on month is increasing, and giving our businesses ways to give us constructive feedback and also ideas to progress the town. Partners have delivered in Dolphin Lane Project, and also progress is being made in place shaping work, such as the Rosegarth Square initiative in PE21. Obviously, we know there is still a lot of more work to do, and we are focused on targeting fly tipping and environmental crime going forward. Continue with the deep cleaning work throughout the town, tackling antisocial behaviour and community safety concerns. We know there is more place shaping work in transformation, and we also look forward to activity in relation to the long-term plan for towns. Together, we will make the positive difference that our town centre needs, and we go into year two with increasing energy, seeing the difference that year one has made, whilst knowing there is still much more work to do. You will also see in the reports some comments that we have collected during year one, that gives a flavour of some of the positive feedback that we have received. I recommend for the committee to review the progress made to date, as provided in this report and its associated appendix, against the commitments made in the Boston Town Centre Strategy and Action Plan 2023-2027, and also for the committee to provide any feedback to be recommended to Cabinet, to be incorporated into the annual review, including any potential other future actions the committee feels should be built into this work for year two of the strategy action plan. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Broughton. Do any members have any questions, councillor Broughton? Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, I would just like to express my sad feeling for Baya, who works with us here. She's from Spain. We just have been talking about what happens in Valencia and Malaga, so our feelings are with you and hope all your family, they are doing okay. Thank you. Yes, I think the town centre is doing well, and I'm going to be saying that yesterday I met with Richard Davies, the Highways portfolio holder, and walked around the market, and he was shocked, the amount of people, sunshine, everybody's happy, shopping. We went around town, he was shocked that the town was busy. We went to the Central Park, we went to Norfolk Street Junction. We talk about a lot of things, and I was impressed, and I was very happy to hear from him, that the town, it looks busy, nice, friendly, the communities are shopping. You can't get any better day than yesterday, and I tell you, I was very proud to be a Bostonian, and I was very proud to show him what we need to do to increase the safety in the town and to make the town even better. Whatever we need to repair, we talked about it, and he was happy to do so. So I can just say, I will support the programme until 27, if it's until 2030, and we are alive, I will support it then. But thank you very much for your hard work. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Any other members? Councillor Isard.
Yes, congratulations, Stowe. I think it's been a quite impressive year for events. It's great to see so many people enjoying themselves in the town centre. I suppose, you talked about the beach in the park. We know that Boston big local funding has now come to an end. I take it you've got plans for the additional funding for those sort of events, ready for 2025?
Most certainly. Due to, obviously, the beach event in the park has been going on for years now, and it's such a great community event for all ages, bringing all the communities together from young to old. We're definitely keeping that for next year, and obviously years to come as well, but the funding will be there for that.
Councillor Austin.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Until recently, I got the impression that a lot of the residents of the borough tended to be rather intimidated by the groups of foreign nationals that tended to accommodate themselves in the marketplace, and they felt uncomfortable. Now, I've noticed an improvement in this personally. I just wondered what has been happening to discourage this type of intimidation occurring.
Thank you, councillor Austin. Yeah, with, obviously, you're probably aware of the operation plotting that we was involved with, with Lincolnshire Police. Part of the funding we received from that not only went on the plans and working with North Sea Camp, it also went on a coordinator who's been dealing with getting to know the communities, the different communities, the different cultures, and she's doing a really good job. And obviously, as you've just said, it is working, but my feeling is it's got to be done on both sides. Obviously, we're saying about the standing in the town and looking intimidated and all that. I know through experience, what I've walked through the memorial area, spoke to them, they turn around, they speak to your back, they look shocked. We can't expect them to do everything. We've got to integrate with them as well. And with this new role that's been took on, the lady doing it is doing a tremendous job. And obviously, we've got different nationalities working on the markets now, opening businesses, and hopefully that will continue, and we can get the communities together.
Just to add with these initiatives, there is no silver bullet. There's no one single action that will resolve a concern, however that's perceived, people hanging around it, etc. But through the strategy and through councillor Broughton's leadership, we're using a number of different methods to engage people, bring people together, celebrate all the good things about Boston, so people can really enjoy a really great public realm that makes a real difference to people's lives. So it's a number of different initiatives, not just one. Okay.
Councillor Isard and councillor Danny.
Yes, just to, as you say, to add to what we've already achieved this year, which is fantastic, I hope that we promoted Boston at various shows and various other locations last year. Are we going to see a bigger increase in what we would say advertising for tourism by going further afield and maybe producing leaflets to draw people in?
Yeah, obviously, the place team and the economic growth team are working on that. We attended the two trade shows this year. We have got plans for next year with different events, and also an event coming in February, which will have a lot of marketing going forward. And And yeah, we want to promote Boston as much as we can. Different leaflets will be coming out, obviously promoting places like the Guildhall and all the cultural side as well. So, yeah, there will be marketing material going out.
Just to add to that, we are also working with the Destination Management Organisation, Destination Lincolnshire. So we are utilizing our kind of partnership infrastructure to promote all that's good about about Boston.
Councillor Danny, then councillor Staples.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. All I want to say, I think there is a big change in the behaviour of the newcomers from the EU members, the newcomers. And I tell you, one of the reasons it is happening is because of the rangers, town rangers, they're doing a great job and I think we should say thank you to them. And I seen them, they talk to them very friendly, they explain to them, there is everything there for them to learn. So I think it that's why, which is, I think, making the town looks much cleaner, much better. And I share with you, I see the cleaners every day at five o'clock, they're cleaning every corner. However, there is a pocket of people who will come and complain about a cigarette butt on the floor. But listen, the world is not perfect, but we try our best, but I think they are doing a good job and from here I will say thank you to them. Thank you.
Councillor Staple.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. My apologies for being late. I'd also like to thank councillor Welbury here because under her influence as well, we've introduced a flea market. Art market and a busking festival, which has brought people successfully into the town. And brought about an added vibrancy, so I think, you know, she deserves some recognition here for her hard work. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I'll add my two pennies then. Again, this is the sort of report you quite like to scrutinise, really. Yeah, there are a couple of amber ones, but they're of no great significance, you know, it's not, none of them are raising any flags. I mean, I must admit, this summer, it was a pleasure to be a councillor, I sort of, I just hung on the coattails of it and, you know. Said how good they were. The events were good, people were joined, they were getting positive feedback. There is definitely, or in my opinion, a different vibe within the town. So the question is, I suppose now is. It's well done and are there anything else we can do better? And really, we're at the stage, I think now. The desire from both the councillors, the cabinet and from staff, you know, to make. This success is such that it is feeding on itself. I mean, yeah, I suppose we could go around the room and suggest some ideas, but in truth, we've got lots of ideas there, they're being delivered. My, I suppose I've got one question is, are we working with coach companies? To try and encourage them? To come in to the town?
There has been approaches, we are looking at building into that. We are talking with a coach company at the moment regarding Christmas, whether we can get that through this year, but we are looking at doing that. Obviously, people like councillor Danny will know, having businesses in town, there used to be coaches coming in. On market days, we're hoping to reintroduce that going forward, but again. Things take time and obviously, but it is, it is on the agenda to look at, yeah, to get, obviously, the more buses that come in from. Places like Skegness and that, bringing fresh eyes to the town, which can only be a positive thing.
Now, I remember many years ago, we had a stall in the market for some reason on a Wednesday. Near where people walked into the market from the station. And much to my surprise, there were people from Wales. They'd left Wales at some ungodly hour in the morning to come to Boston, which is great. But obviously, you know, that sort of thing, but, you know. And I'm glad you're aware, you know, that you are working with coach comes to try and get that sort of sense back. I assume they were on their way to Skeg as well or something. But I I was just amazed at where people were coming from to come to the town. And I suppose my other question is, from my experience sort of elsewhere. Are we working with community groups to try and get them to take ownership of some of the events? That they gain legs when they go forward? Yeah, so we've had some, we've got some great events and quite rightly, we're pump priming at the moment, getting them going. But, you know, are we working with, or trying to encourage a number of groups, people of an interest in X, that they're going to have. A rock and roll thing or something, you know, that, because obviously, whilst. It's essential that we pump prime, I think, and you're doing a great job. But really, if it's going to last, it it needs to be. Going it under its own steam to an extent, so that, you know, it then gains momentum. So just that's a question, I mean.
Yeah, obviously, this year we had some external event, we obviously, Boston's strongest was in partnership with the Mayhem Gym. Next year, in February, we've got Boston Brilliance, which is a really exciting event that's gonna be happening in the town. Which is both in collaboration with Boston Borough Council and Boston College. And we're also looking at other external events this next year, working with different partners as well. We're just waiting to finalise a few details and then as soon as we know all the events, it will be announced out there so people can. If it's over a weekend, they can come and potentially stop in the hotels and visit, get the visits all planned. To use all the facilities that we've got in Boston.
Just to further add to that, this year we've taken on a volunteer coordinator as well. We've developed a trusted volunteer scheme, so we're very much, you know, recognizing, you know, how. How important people find Boston as their place, their home, and that they want to give back to Boston as well. So working with the voluntary sector, working with people that want to make a difference in their community is absolutely part of this agenda.
Councillor Austin.
Just a quick point, taking up your point further. The Boston Marathon is a good example of a community based organisation. Which brings people from all over the country and from abroad and. But I don't feel we do make enough effort to. Get them to know more about the town while they're here, so if anything can be done in that direction, that would be a good move forward. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Anybody else, councillor Danny?
Mr Chairman, I just want to compliment on the visitors. And I will tell you, in my car, I had people from New Zealand, from Australia, South Africa, from Japan, from Norway. Many times in the morning I will get Dutch people coming in, German people, we had people from America, from Canada. There is a lot of tourists from all around the world that are coming to Boston, you'd be surprised. I have a friend of mine now, which is, I develop a good relation in Australia, is a lady who has her sister who lives in Boston. And I organised for her birthdays because she lives on her own. And this is how far, you know, they come from, these tourists to Boston. All we have to do is, once Boston is presented in the right way, people will be coming because. The the good work, it takes time to develop themselves, I mean. And and that's what we have to do as locals and as residents of Boston. The the better image we give about Boston, the more people will come. And I can assure you, there is a lot of international. I mean, French, Spanish, there is few Spanish communities here, so people, they love Boston when they come to it and they found it very clean and that's credit to Boston.
Well, I I think obviously the feeling of the committee is really, you carry on the good work. You know, everybody seems very appreciative of the work, both what you're doing, Dale, and your other cabinet members, then what the officers are doing. And this, you know, it really, to my mind, is working for the town. And, yeah, so our suggestions are, you know, keep up the good work, I think, unless anybody else. They want to be changing, but I think that's it. You've got our full support, whatever we can do to help.
Thank you, much appreciated. And thank you all the councillors for your input as well.
Oh, and don't forget, weekend coming up is Christmas. Thank you very much. Don't feel the need to stay. Thank you. So our next item is the council tax support scheme. Get paid. Page forty seven of your agenda. Sorry, let me find my notes. Yeah, so, yeah, it's page forty seven. It'll be presented by the portfolio holder councillor Sandeep Goshe and supported by the reports author, head of revenue and benefits, Sharon Hand.
Thank you, Chair. The council is required to review its council tax support scheme annually and consult with major precepting authorities. And other persons who may have an interest on the proposals for the forthcoming year. Councils have been required to develop local council tax support schemes to support low income working age households since two thousand and thirteen. Prior to this, support was based on a national council tax benefit scheme. Delivered by councils but based on rules determined by central government. The government continues to prescribe the scheme for pensioners and the council has no discretion in this area. This support focuses on the scheme for working age claimants. So the current scheme at this moment is Boston's current scheme provides a maximum level of support up to seventy five percent for the lowest income working age claimants. Leaving at least twenty five percent of the annual council tax bill to be paid. Total scheme expenditure in twenty four twenty five is forecast to be around four point four million pounds with almost two point two million. Of that relating to working age claimants. The cost of the CTS scheme is shared between the major precepting authorities, as shown at section two point three in the report. With this council picking up around a ten point three percent of the total amount. A fundamental review has been carried out, recognising that the current scheme is now dated. With objectives to modernise and simplify the scheme for the customer and improve administrative efficiency. The review has considered different scheme approaches along with analysis and data modelling based on current caseload and expenditure. Section four of the report provides a breakdown of the current working age caseload by household type. Table two in section four point three provides a view of the number of current CTS recipients with areas in the last financial year twenty three, twenty four. The data reveals that over thirty percent of the current working age CTS recipients have council tax areas in the previous financial years. Almost fifty five percent of those in areas are in households with children. The outcome of the review has led to consultation on the set of modification proposals shown in section six of this report. I will not read out each of these options as members will have had the opportunity to consider the report ahead of this meeting. However, most significantly, the proposals include an increase in the level of CTS. Section six point three, option A, sets out the proposal to increase the maximum level of support to hundred percent for households with children. Demonstrating the council's commitment to respond positively to concerns over child poverty. The proposals also seeks to increase the level of support to eighty five percent for other households. There will be an increased cost to the scheme expenditure as a result of this change. However, a combination of the options shown in section six would provide some offset and improve administrative efficiency. The option consulted upon provide for simplification and improved administration efficiency. In achieving this, there will be some areas where there are losers and gainers. As is usual in a review of this nature. It is estimated that these changes would result in net increased scheme expenditure of around three hundred and eighty four thousand pounds. Of which the cost to this authority would be around forty thousand pounds. In any scheme, there may be hardship cases. The introduction of a discretionary exceptional hardship payment fund. It's an option G, would all allow additional short term assistance in exceptional cases. And support through signposting to other sources of help and to help customers maximise their income. Subject to a decision by Cabinet to introduce such a fund and scheme, work will be undertaken to develop the details for the scheme. The public survey is shown at appendix A to this report. Consultation closes on Friday fifteenth November twenty four. Cabinet will then consider the consultation feedback in December and make its recommendation to full council in January. Turning to the report recommendation, the corporate and communities committee is invited to provide its views to Cabinet on the scheme proposals for twenty five, twenty six. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any members have any questions? I'm going to jump in. I'm so terribly happy, really. The way we treated the most vulnerable. People in our community by way of council tax support since two thousand and thirteen. Has been, to my mind, deliberately cruel. In two thousand and thirteen, we had the option to keep. Money in the pockets of hardworking families. In Boston, we have over five thousand children living in poverty. We could have kept three hundred plus pounds a year in their pockets. Of getting on for three thousand families. Well, it would be important, but basically, we would have kept half a million pounds. In the economy of Boston. Children would have maybe had a new pair of shoes a bit quicker, the possibility of a holiday. And instead, Boston Borough in two thousand and thirteen, having the option of, one, keeping. Council tax support for working people at a hundred percent. Or reducing it to ninety two percent. Seventy nine percent or seventy five percent, they chose to go for the maximum. So they took the maximum they could out of the pockets of the hardworking people. People in Boston, and many are doing two jobs, who are struggling. Trying to keep their children fed. And finally, we have a council with some compassion. That is looking to do the best it can. So within this proposal. Many families will see over three hundred pounds extra a year. Obviously, it's a percentage thing, so not everybody will get the hundred percent. But, you know, they will see that money, that we people who are not going in the circle of arrears, not finding themselves with bailiffs maybe if we're lucky. Because if they're out of that, having to pay, there's no arrears to be enforced. You know, the number of times I've had. Ward members who are basically being chased by bailiffs for last year's bill. So they don't pay this year's bill, which means they get chased by bailiffs for next year's bill. Now, I accept we are living in straitened times, you know, I would love to be seeing this, we're going to a hundred percent for everybody. But, yeah, we have to be realistic, you know, and, you know, the evidence shows. That it's families with children who are struggling the most. So all I can personally do is congratulate this administration for finally. You know, being bold enough to make sure they defend the people of Boston over the interests of county. So I personally will be supporting the maximum relief for those working families with children. And I accept we do need to do some rationalisation to make things more efficient. And so I'm happy with all the other recommendations go along with it, because. Any negative from that is so outweighed by that change. Yeah, literally, there are some people now who are not going to be frightened of having bailiffs next year. They're well done. And I say, thank you for this communication for actually listening to us. Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for your speech. After all, we are human, I think, and we have to show some solidarity to our residents. And that's how communities work. And I think, I think what the council here has been fighting for and what they are doing and what they're gonna do in the future, I think is great. And like I say, we have to show some humanity to each other. We have to make, to make sure that people are living comfortably and safely in the town. And all what you have said, I totally agree with you and I totally agree with the programme and the tackle support, we should do that. And I, when I was elected the first time, the first thing which attracts my attention is the council tax. I say, why we give our council tax to Lincoln to look after us? And I didn't agree with it. I I couldn't swallow it because it's unfair. The money, if we keep more money here, we can help more people and we can show more things to our, to our town. Unfortunately, it's not the way to, it it works. Somebody had made decisions probably some time and make it that way, localization or centralisations of one town to take all the money and decide for you. But it's still, I will support this scheme and I think we show a lot of solidarity for our town and I'm very pleased to see that. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Isard?
I think it's a really good report going forward. I. I I agree with your comments, Paul. I think it's a really. I think it's a really about time. I suppose, just, you know me, where, how did you come to the figure of reducing the UCL from sixteen to ten thousand? Why a six thousand drop and not maybe just a three thousand drop?
Yeah, so we've done a lot of data modelling and analysis of data that we have. We've also looked across what other authorities were doing across the country as well. And there is no right or wrong figure. And in actual fact, the consultation is on two figures. It's on an eight thousand pound and a ten thousand pound. But it could have been any figure, but actually, those were the, the areas which came out of the fundamental review, out of the analysis. And, you know, the steer was taken by consorting on those two potential values of reduction to eight thousand or ten thousand.
Councillor Austin.
Mister Chairman, Lincoln City has always been regarded as being the most generous authority in the county in this respect. Do we know what the current Lincoln City situation is?
The last time I looked, it was a hundred percent.
Thank you. Yeah, the last time I looked, it was a hundred percent. Now, I don't know what the proposals are and what they're working on again for their twenty five twenty six scheme, but certainly.
That's for single households as well. And I believe East Lindsay?
East Lindsay is currently the same as Boston in terms of its seventy five percent maximum.
Okay.
As is South Holland. And both of those councils are also consorting on an increase, but not to the, the same extent actually as Boston.
I believe there is another, I thought, I think there is another district in Lincolnshire who is doing something different. I thought that was East Lindsay, but obviously not, no. Anyway. No, so Lincoln is a hundred percent for everybody. And yeah, I mean, that would be great. But I do feel that the administrator has actually struck a very fine balance on, on this, you know. We are, the proposal is to increase by ten percent what single households can get, which is good. And, but I, my view is, let's see how this year goes and yeah, you can always go again. But, so really, we need to go through and really recommend on each bit, don't we, would be the.
Provide our views, that's all, Jim?
Yeah. Yeah, well, the views are, so it's whether the, it's the hundred, the hundred percent for working, for families with children and eighty percent for single households. I think we're supporting that. And so the only other one where we've got a question on is whether the, you know, your maximum capital allowance, which is apparently sixteen thousand, in other words, you can have sixteen thousand pounds worth of savings before your benefit gets affected. The proposals are to reduce that to either ten or eight.
Yes, that's right. The consultation is asking whether people agree that we should look to reduce. And if so, what value do they think it should go to?
So I mean, again, from here, if anybody's got any particular views, you know, on that, I'm, I think ten thousand will be fine, but equally, if the consultation was eight thousand. Actually, one comment I did mean to say when I was rabbiting on earlier. It would have been nice had the consultation ended before this meeting. Just for future reference, you know, it would be quite nice to sit here and have consultation in front of us. And we can say, well, the people of Boston are saying X. And, you know, that would have been a little bit better, but still, it's still good to. Councillor Gosha.
Yeah, as Sharon mentioned, there is no right and wrong answer to that. I think eight thousand is, South Holland is eight thousand, I assume, right? They're on eight thousand.
Sorry.
South, South Holland.
Um, yes. Been a six thousand.
Yeah. So we just came up with a number which is somewhere in between. So, yeah.
I mean, I think, I think the outcome of this committee is that, again, we, we're happy really with to go along with what the consultation says as well. So, yeah. I don't think anybody wants to go to the barricade over eight thousand or anything, no? So I think they're the main issues that you, that we're. So, but again, you know, thanks, again, thanks for every, all the work on this you've done, you know. And, you know, looking at that potential to help, you know, the families in Boston is really good. So thank you very much for that. And everybody happy with what we've been saying here that we'll support that? Yep. So that, that's our position. Thank you. Okay. So item, the next item is the street naming and numbering policy. That's page sixty three of your papers. It'll be presented by the portfolio holder councillor John Baxter, supported by the group manager for building control, Pauline Lyon, and our assistant director for regulatory, Christian.
Thank you Chair and good evening everyone. My pleasure then to present the report at agenda item three, pages sixty three to eighty six. Its subject is the street naming and the numbering policy. Its purpose is to seek today's scrutiny committee's comments on the proposed partnership, street naming and numbering policy. My thanks to Pauline on my left, who has done some wonderful work here. So the summary of the report are contained on page sixty three and sixty four. The council has a duty to ensure that all roads in the district are named and all properties numbered or named. Maintaining a comprehensive and high standard for naming streets and numbering of naming properties is essential. Basically then to ensure, it's a shame that councillor Buck isn't here, ensure posters delivered efficiently, facilitate emergency services finding a property without undue delay, to provide consistency of property based information across local government and national address data sets. For example, the national address catatia and the related ordinance survey address based products. Also to facilitate the reliable delivery of services and products. And finally, to enable the public to find where they want to go. So this function currently sits with assets at Boston Borough Council, but in other districts at South Holland and East Lindsay, our district sister councils, it sits in regulatory building control. So a single partnership policy will ensure there is a consistent approach across all three councils and will in due course deliver the objectives of the regulatory service review in facilitating the S N N function at BBC to also sit with regulatory building control. A shared policy will also support shared working across the partnership. Here at the council, we've never had a documented street naming and numbering policy, although the current practices are similar to that of E L D C and S H D C. Having a policy will benefit both the users of the service and also the teams in delivering the service by having a clear set of processes and procedures to follow. So there is an appendix A attached to the report. And the recommendation we put before you then is that the committee considers the policy at appendix A and provides comments to shape the final version of the South and East Lincolnshire councils partnership, street naming and numbering policy. So the reasons for this recommendations that I put to you is to ensure corporate and community overview and scrutiny committee have the opportunity to input the police prior, sorry, the policy prior to consideration by Cabinet. Thank you for your time. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Austin.
Thank you Chair. I'm, in general, I'm in complete agreement with most of the, this report. But I have three recommendations for small, small changes in item eight point one on page seventy seven. I will come to those three recommendations in a minute. Now, the reason for this is that when I was first elected to this council in two thousand and seven, I was soon bombarded with complaints from one of the roads in Wiberton, West End Road, Wiberton, where we have a situation where there are forty properties altogether, all with names but no numbers. And the problem is that there were many vehicles, vans in particular, cruising up and down, looking for these properties, some of which weren't even in, on the electoral list in, in proper order. So I, I thought, well, this is a pretty easy matter to resolve. We'll give them numbers. So I went to see Nigel Hall, who was the officer in charge of such matters at the time. And he gave me a knowing smile and said, best of luck. This has never happened in the borough in my long time here. But undeterred, I wrote to all the properties to try and get the necessary two thirds agreement that every property should have a number. I was amazed to find that the vast majority at that time were versus, almost vociferally against the idea, even though it was causing aggravation and ambulances were having difficulties and so on. People are very precious about their house name. And they felt that to have a number would reduce property values and they would feel somehow their standing in society was reduced. So I failed and I was vilified for trying to change the situation. Now, so I gave it up and said, I'm not going to do that. Try that again. Today, of course, with modern technology, the situation is better in that if you have the right technology and know how, it's, there, there isn't any particular difficulty finding a house. But if you haven't got that know how or the equipment with you, then you're still in the same problem. So I'm, my three recommendations are that in para eight one, the heading should include the words or numbering, so that it should renumbering exist, renumbering existing properties or or numbering existing properties. So that should be included. The second thing is that because of this experience that the two thirds threshold makes the change impossible, a fifty percent threshold should be included by, as a recommendation by this committee to make, as a more sensible proportion. And also, the third recommendation, where there are no numbers on, to properties on a street or lane, they should be listed in the electoral list in their proper order.
Anybody, any comments in general, comments on councillor Austin's? Councillor Danny? No, all general.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. The first thing which is, I want to mention that there is a survey for the previous agenda to fill. So just, you know, to remind everyone.
No, that's the one that ends on the twenty four.
Yeah.
That's on line.
It's here, it's, yeah. What I would like to say is just from my experience is we needed to name two places in Fenside, a new house and estate. And the names which has come from the council was Elvis Presley. And I laughed. And I said, then, no, we cannot put that, because we have a lot of local heroes in town. And I would like to see the names of our local heroes or the surrounding area around Boston to be, the streets to be named after them. And I think that will give us, I think, a sort of pushing the youngsters as well to follow suit, because they will search for the person who is he. It's like, for example, we have on Fenside Road, the, the new house in estate was called Fisherman, because we need to give credit to our fishermen. And we have the other one, Puritan Way, we name it after Callum Johnson, which is a local, you know, boxer who won a Commonwealth Medal. He represents Boston in many ways. And there is more heroes in Boston. And I think this is the names we should choose first for our local places and local streets or the new places. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Gorian?
Thank you for permitting me to speak, Mister Chairman. I wanted to address councillor Austin's point. And it's before the committee make a decision, it's specifically on the point around whether you go for two thirds or fifty percent. And I think that when you're making major changes to people's lives, there's a reason that you ask for two thirds majority. And I think there's a reason that, if I can give you a concrete example, perhaps the Brexit vote is a salient example. Were you going to say that, Mister Chairman? That where you have a simple majority, you don't have an overwhelming swathe of people to carry the vote one way or the other. And you end up with people feeling very, very disgruntled because it's split down the middle so, you know, so clearly that there's no one side or the other felt strongly about something. And so while I feel your pain, councillor Austin, I know you worked very hard on getting your residents to adopt a numbering policy. I think that there is a very good reason behind the two thirds majority being required. And I think that's it, that you don't end up with neighbour against neighbour because you've split them down the middle. And that's what potentially your recommendation ends up doing. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
No, I, I must admit, I was, I, I think there is a danger if you have it, you end up with this too tight. I think you do need that sort of a good, healthy majority within a community wanting that change. Else they'll feel it's being imposed on them. But councillor Austin.
I would like to just say that I think it's not a unique example. I've come across several other lanes and roads in the borough that have a similar problem. So it's a little bit more widespread than just the odd road.
Yeah. I mean, maybe if we could just ask obviously what other councils do, but my feeling would be they won't go for a sort of a tight cut. But in general, I mean, I think it's a good idea. We, we, oh, councillor Adam?
Yeah, I tend to agree with my colleague behind, I would prefer not to go to a fifty fifty split. I think a majority wanting change would always be better and beneficial for me. And just changing the subject slightly away from that is on the top of page seventy three. And the, where developers use the development name. Now, obviously, I live on the Riverside Development, which was Chestnut Holmes' pet baby for the Riverside. That was what they called it. What does that actually mean, that paragraph?
Councillor, it means that if a developer is advertising a development in a name, it doesn't necessarily mean that when it gets its formal address schedule, that that development name will be in the, as, as the street name.
Okay, I can understand that. So we, we could make a change to what the developers particularly like. Because most developers like pretty names to be able to sell. And obviously, the Riverside, it was on the Riverside. So it kind of combined. I must admit, our numbering system on the Riverside is diabolical and most traders can't find the houses because it's, it doesn't run in a unique pattern. So I just wanted an explanation what you meant. So if a development is made Meadow land or something, we can look at that but not have to go along with having Meadow Lane, Meadow Street, Meadow, etc.
No, if, if a developer chooses to advertise the development before it's got its official street name and numbering, then that development name doesn't necessarily have to be duplicated into the street, street names, the street naming and numbering schemes. And all new street names would go out to consultation to parish and ward councillors as well. So there would be the opportunity then to obviously. So there would be the opportunity then to obviously, you know, disagree or agree with any proposed names.
Yeah, I must admit, I was surprised we didn't have a policy. So I don't find having a policy to be that bad idea really, you know. I mean, it does make sense that, you know, because again, if you've got a policy and people do try to challenge you, you can refer to the policy you've used. And I suppose as long as you've used it properly, you're all right. Yes, I always liked the sound of Gleeson Avenue. But anyway, that's an aside. And actually, the police headquarters in Sheffield is on Lettsby Avenue, which is quite good. Councillor Austin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I've forgotten what I was going to say now, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
Yeah, it'll come back to me, but.
That's okay. No, so I think in general that the consensus here is that it makes sense of a policy. The policy feels fair. We've taken on board what councillor Austin says. But I think the feeling here is that really you need that slightly more secure support in the community before you start going against what they want.
I know what it was. The other issue is that what powers have we got to insist that people have the name of their house in a prominently displayed? Because this is the other problem on place like Weston Road. Some houses don't have their name displayed. They dropped off, they're not renewed or they are insignificant. So have we any powers as a borough to insist that there are clear names that can be seen at night from a vehicle?
I think unfortunately, the answer to that is no, we don't have any powers to enforce that. The policy recommends that people put their house names in a prominent position. And to be fair, it would benefit them with the deliveries and if the emergency services need to find an address. But no, I think, I'm afraid the answer is no, we don't have any powers to enforce that, unfortunately.
So it was amazing how many houses I go to without letterboxes. But anyway, I think we, you know, our views on that are that, yes, we welcome the policy and we think it's striking the right balance, so.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillors. I think it might be best if we just go back to, you know, councillor Austin's question about paragraph eight. He mentioned about the title where he felt it should mention numbering. So in the first paragraph, it says if the council feels it's appropriate, the renaming, numbering, renumbering is required, so it's covered there. I think we've covered the other question about is it two thirds or fifty percent? Just to mention as well, councillor Danny, this policy, as you know, in the past, I think it had to have been dead for ten years before it was considered. You get a street named after you and it's only Callum Johnson and Mel Marshall who had these roads named after them. So you will see, you don't have to be dead to have a street named after you. Maybe Danny Crescent sounds quite good. It's covered in section six, like the naming of new streets. So all you need to do is write into building control, councillor Danny.
I just replied to councillor Buck, so I thought you said Danny Prison, so I was worried. Actually, it's me who named Callum Johnson Close. It's me who chose the name and I choose the Fisherman as well because I want to say thank you to the fishermen of Boston. And that's why I say we should probably choose our local heroes before ending up with Elvis Presley or something crazy like that because it was funny.
So I would like to say thank you to Pauline and the guys who've been involved. As a council, I think we should encourage to recognise people who do things in their community and what a legend that they, well, the street's named after you. So we've considered all the various comments then, and I think we've covered the recommendations.
I think actually councillor Staple.
I just think, you know, it's good that parish councillors are being consulted because they know their community, they understand what's going on and they can put up, you know, very good recommendations. In fact, we did so in Fishtough with a housing development that went up two or three years ago. How to recognise the fact that it was agricultural land and so it was named the Furrows. And it's appropriate, it's a nice name, a nice address. So it does, it does work.
So thank you for your comments, folks, and thank you for the support of this new document and policy. Thank you.
Thank you, which takes us on to item four. Which, yeah, so it's page eighty seven of your agenda. It's a customer feedback policy. And it's being presented by our information manager and data protection officer, Richard Steele. Oh, Richard.
Good evening. Apologies for that, my password's a bit long. I'm here to present a draft customer feedback policy for the Boston Borough Council and seek feedback before it's considered for approval by Cabinet. There is a clear need to manage feedback and complaints received by the council and deal with them appropriately. This policy is designed to achieve that aim whilst ensuring that customers are dealt with fairly consistently and proportionately. The draft policy, which starts at page ninety three, brackets appendix one of the agenda, has been fully reviewed, updated and aligned across the partnership. Reviewing the policy ensures that, reviewing the policy ensured that any updates are captured as well as ensuring the policy is still fit for purpose and complies with the latest local government and social care ombudsman complaints handling code. This was launched in two thousand and twenty four. The recommendation on page eighty seven is that the committee considers a draft feedback report at appendix one and recommends with comments to Cabinet for approval. This policy, which is powered on page ninety three of the agenda back, is being aligned to be the same across all three councils in the S and L E P. This gives the council a framework to implement and take appropriate actions when dealing with complaints. The policy also clearly defines on page ninety four what is and what is not a complaint, as well as the steps that will be taken to address these complaints, and that's in page ninety eight. Paragraphs two point three to two point six on page eighty eight of the covering report set out what the policy covers and the key changes from the current version of the policy. Appendix two on page one hundred and three is the complaint journey, which is a flow chart showing how complaints are dealt with at each stage and depending on circumstances. That's from a customer's perspective. Adopting this policy will ensure the council complies with the requirements of the code and in doing so will support the council to use the data and learning from complaints to drive service improvements, and this is in line with the work in the customer experience strategy.
So are there any questions? Councillor Iza? Then councillor Danny?
All right, thanks for that. Just one thing, and I'm sure that there is already governance on this, but unless I missed it, there's no kind of time scales to respond to complaints in this document. I'm sure we've already got some so that we can measure ourselves against them. I was wondering whether that could have been included in this report?
There is some. So in terms of the time scales, in the new policy, the time scales, we've got five working days to acknowledge your complaint, acknowledge or understanding of the complaint. The moment we acknowledge that complaint, we have then got ten working days to respond to the complainant with a concluded complaint. At the end of that period, if the complainant then decides to submit a stage two complaint, the same five days start again and then we've got twenty days to recover, to respond to that individual. And that's in compliance with the LGSCO Code of Complaints.
And obviously, we have the option of extending that if the complaint is rather complex because obviously, five days to respond is insufficient. But ten days may not leave you enough time if it's going to be a complicated one. That's clear.
Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, that was one of my questions is the responding time. But, okay, leave that. My question is, do we get a lot of complaints? And is there a situation where we sort out a complaint within a day?
The, I brought some figures to us today. So so far this year, there's been thirty nine complaints made to the council which met the criteria of stage one or stage two. The cascade ratio is only eighteen percent of of stage one complaints lead to a stage two complaint. And for clarity, there's only been one LGSCO complaint. The LGSCO is the local government and social care ombudsman. So that is the pathway, so it's a cascade of drop.
Councillor, councillor, councillor Austin?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's very important that we have a common policy between the three councils and I'm content to accept this as a satisfactory document.
No, I agree with you. I mean, one, it makes sense to have the same policy for all the councils in the partnership. Two, I actually thought this is a nice, it's a well-written policy. You know, and it keeps us up to speed with the current views of the ombudsman as well. Yeah, so not only have we got, to my mind, a relatively easy readable policy that's, you know, up to date and, you know, applies across all three councils, which makes it easier for our staff when they come to, you know, deal with a complaint from different places. If I'm right, for the last year, though, we've had nothing upheld by the ombudsman, have we?
I do recall that.
No, I mean, I had a letter, for some reason, as chair of this, I get a letter from them once a year. And we haven't got any, which is good. You know, so, you know, compared to many other places, you know, I think that's offering a very good service and we should recognise that. But I think, again, the feeling is sensible policy, well done, well written, and it makes sense to be across all three councils. This is actually, we do have to vote on, and we have to recommend this to council, proposed by councillor Danny. Is there a second, councillor Iza? All those in favour, please show. Carried unanimously. Thank you. Which I think brings us to the work programme. Pages, here we go. And yeah, so I'll now hand over to George to update members on our work programme.
Thank you, Chairman. There's changed the work programme scheduled in that the update on the actions of the peer review will now be tabled at the meeting on the sixth of March and not to the January meeting, as noted within the papers. A further addition to that meeting is an update on the HMO's position in Boston, in line with the previous report, and looking forward at the impact of any new legislation. The next meeting already has a busy agenda with three reports currently scheduled. And as such, do members have any further reports they wish to see moving forward?
Members, any impact? Just councillor Danny?
If, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just if I may suggest, because we talked about the tax support and you talk about the child poverty in Boston, can we get any report? How is the situation now and what's the strategies of our local, I'm in Boston Borough Council, how they are tackling this issue of child poverty? Because as far as I'm concerned, the last time the figures is around thirty two percent. And probably is increasing, if we can do that, thank you.
So, yeah, if we can add in sometime in the summer a member briefing, you know, on where child poverty is, what we're doing, what else we can do and members can just think. The things that are still bubbling under, we have an issue where we're wanting to look into buses and that will be in next year. And also, we are looking or looking to look at a review of the population change report that we did in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. We had, if you remember, Mr Fisher gave us a sort of briefing on what we've done in the past. And we are looking to see if any, you know, streams of work we can look at to try and help things go forward on something there. So they're bubbling under, but at any stage, if any member thinks of something they want to go on, you know, just email me and we can look at, you know, bring it on to the, you know, on to the work programme. So thank you, George, for that. Your first of many, maybe? And moves us on to the last item, which is me leaving. And you get the advantage of a comfort break while I get myself out. Thank you very much, everybody, from now on. And obviously councillor Welbury, you're in the good hands of councillor Welbury, who will.
Welcome back. Our final item of business this evening is the council PSPS Transformation and Service Modernisation Programme, which is on page 109 of the agenda. This report will be presented by the portfolio holder councillor Anne Dorian, who is supported by our assistant director of corporate, James Gilbert, our chief finance officer, Sam Knowles, and our head of corporate services, Mark Elson. I would remind members that whilst the covering report itself is a public document, the appendix is not. And committee will need to agree to move into exempt measures prior to any reference to the appendix. Over to councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As our local authority trading company, PSPS has now been providing services to Boston Borough Council since 2021. The transformation and modernisation plan before you this evening is the very first three-way council transformation plan since our council became part of the South and East Lincolnshire Council Partnership. The plan has been designed to provide the council with support in modernising its service delivery, such as by improved technology offer, greater customer and resident access, and wider enabling improvements to support the overall offer from PSPS to the councils. The transformation plan and service modernisation programme is an ambitious set of projects split by the themes of our customer and our residents, modernisation and efficiency, and organisational development. Now, with the transformation plan, you will note that there is a range of projects from providing out-of-hours digital telephony solutions to leveraging, sorry, leveraging automation and advancements in technology, through to a commitment to use plain language. There has been extensive partnership engagement through the creation of this plan with engagement from council officers, the PSPS board and the council stakeholder group. Indeed, there have also been member briefings, one of which was last night for this council, which I know some of you attended. Through this report, PSPS will be seeking a total investment of £5,039,000, sorry, £39,238 and more return savings of £9,613,221. For our council alone, this equates to us investing £1,209,417, but returning a saving, we hope, of £2,307,173 if all projects are approved at the business case stage. Now, each project will be subject to its own business case and approval process, and it will have a multi-stakeholder governance board. This evening, Madam Chair, your committee is asked to note the transformation plan and the service modernisation programme and provide your feedback, which the cabinet will then consider when it meets early in the new year. And now, Madam Chair, I would throw back to you if you would wish to go into private session.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Committee, you're asked to agree to move the meeting into exempt measures. As by virtue of paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972, the document for further deliberation continues commercially contained, sorry, commercially sensitive information. Would all members in favour of moving into exempt session, please show any against, any abstentions? Sorry.
All in favour.
Yeah, all in favour. That's clearly carried, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Can we just turn off the live stream, please, before we move any further? Thank you.